Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, July 20th, 2017, Meeting of the Special School Board of Leon County, Florida. We are here tonight to seek permission to advertise the proposed tentative budget. We're meeting at the Aquilina Howell Center at 3955 Pensacola Street in Tallahassee, Florida. The first opening item on our agenda calls for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Cox, would you lead us in that, please? Would you rise?
Yes.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Striplin?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you read into the records the changes and additions for this meeting?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Madam Rasmussen?
Thank you.
For our conversation, please go ahead.
Sorry, we don't have a thought for the day today, but I wanted to ask if we might take a moment of silence in honor and memory. We've lost one of our Leon High School students on Sunday. Trey Harris was a rising 10th grader at Leon High School, and the services will be at St. Thomas More on this Saturday at noon, and I think a moment for his family especially, but also our whole Leon family and all the students that were his friends and teachers that knew him. Thank you.
Certainly not a... Just a moment, please. Come on. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now for the changes and additions.
Yes, ma'am. Superintendent recommends approval of changes and additions to the July 20, 2017, School Board meeting agenda as presented. Number one, item 3.01, proposed tentative budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018, added to the agenda, information in the public content area. Number two, item 3.01, proposed tentative budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018, change the information in the public content area. This was due to a change in the millage rate. And those are it.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Lewis Butler.
I move the change and addition to the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Butler, seconded by Rasmussen. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Poses the same. It passes unanimously. Okay. Thank you. Now, we are ready for item three on the agenda, which is the proposed tentative budget for the fiscal year ending in June 30, 2018. Mr. Superintendent, are there words for us?
Yes, Madam Chair. If I may, I'd like to first thank Ms. Coughlin and Mr. Wimbley for all their hard work and commitment to getting this document put together. I stayed late, but they were staying even later, and I passed by on Sundays, and Naomi's van was there, so thank you all so much, Naomi, for all of your hard work. I saw the effort and time and energy that went into preparing this document. So having said that, I'd like to tee the discussion up before I turn it over to them, and honestly, I could barely sleep last night. I am that excited about this budget, and Merrill told me he could barely sleep last night, which was even more exciting.
That's scary. That's real scary.
But, well, I was expecting, hoping for the best, and expecting the worst and hoping for the best, I guess, but after meeting with Naomi, what, two days ago, we had some encouraging news that I'd like to share with you at this time, and then I'll kind of turn it over to them to make their presentation. So hit it, Rhonda. So these are a few of the highlights that I'm very, 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 very proud of, that we're going to present to you this evening. First, you can see, and we're going to put this out, we sent a news release out, I think Chris sent it out about five or 10 minutes ago with some of these highlights, but the first, some of the raises that we talked about, that I discussed with you several weeks ago, but with the school bus drivers and the food service workers, about a 12.5% raise, a 15% average raise to school bookkeepers, 3.175 for paraprofessionals and other 10-month employees. And after getting news and talking to Naomi and Merrill, Ms. Lewis Butler, you will be very excited to hear that I am also recommending a 20% raise for substitute teachers. Yes, I thought you would be excited, so...
Thank you, Superintendent.
And they have not had a raise in over a decade.
All right. Thank you so much.
So their salary has been at $10 for 11 years now, and I heard you, I was sitting back there, but I heard you loud and clear.
I know.
And they don't have a bargaining group.
Full decade.
They don't have anyone, they don't have an advocate group.
Only one can speak for them.
You're right, and you did, and I heard you. So we are committed, if you approve this budget, to offer substitute teachers a 20% raise the first time since 2006. Additionally, and this is what I'm most excited about, we were able to, and the reason we were able to do this, two-fold. One, is we did not spend as much money as we had budgeted from the previous year. We made some adjustments after I took office in January, and we didn't, so we had a pretty healthy ending fund balance. And two, we didn't have to budget as much money moving forward with administrative salaries because of some of the other changes that we made. Having said that, we were able to send $1 million back to the emergency fund, which was reduced from $4.5 million to $3 million several years ago, so I was able, we were able to send $1 million, recommend sending $1 million back to the emergency fund, and also recommending a $2.7 million increase into the unrestricted fund balance, which you know had been depleted over the last several years, which will bring it, I believe, it'll be above the 3% threshold. Is it as healthy as we would like it? No, with Merrill, probably not, but we are in a much better financial position today, tonight, than we were last year, and I'm very excited about that. And we were able to, as you can see, keep those partnerships that were so very important to you all with Peace Jam and the Sharing Tree. We're also partnering with the Anti-Defamation League to train, to do some No Place for Hate training. We also have the National Achievers Society that we kept funding in there for that, the Foster Grandparent Program with Elder Care and with World Class Schools. So all of that is in the budget again this year. I am so excited, really, I could not wait for tonight. Are we perfect? No, but we are in a lot better shape, given the conditions that were dealt by the legislature, than I thought we would be in. Unfortunately, I will say, the Best and Brightest Program and us being handcuffed with that $3.7 million, with that bonus structure, a one-time bonus, if they would have given us that money, I think we really could have done some good things with performance pay for teachers. However, when it comes to teacher compensation this year, the legislature wants to dictate how that happens, not only in Leon County, but in all 67 counties throughout the state. So the Best and Brightest Program will include, again, a $6,000 bonus to about 200 of our 2,300-plus teachers. They'll receive a $6,000 bonus, and then all of our highly effective teachers will receive $1,200, and effective teachers will receive $800. But it's a start, and I was, again, with our food service folks, our school bus drivers, our 10-month employees, and with our bookkeepers and substitute teachers. I'm excited about this. I wish we could have done more, but I can promise you, or I feel as though that we did the absolute best with the resources that we had. So having said that, now...
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I'm finished.
I'm trying to get on that same page and be excited. Under which one of the community partnerships does the program, I've got to remember the name of it, fall that was being presented and introduced over at the Riley Campus, the juvenile justice, what was it called?
Restorative justice.
Restorative justice, not...
So restorative, so Dr. Rogers is not here this evening, but I'm going to let her, I can let her report out at maybe one of our workshops or at an agenda review, because we sent her and a team of our folks to restorative justice training last year, so that our folks could then start training other people in our individual sites to incorporate those types of initiatives at all of our schools. Last year, it was at Griffin, and now we're going to move them into Fairview and Nims and some of our other schools, but Dr. Rogers is kind of taking the lead on that, so I can let her report out on where we stand with restorative justice practices in all of our schools.
That's an important piece, so thank you. Listen, look forward to it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to say to the Superintendent, you didn't mention, but I'm so happy to see the $250,000 there for schools to go to the flex funds, which we've talked about a lot, which hadn't been raised, I don't think, in like...
How in the world could I have skipped over that?
I don't know, but you know how important that is to me.
So, yes, so Board Member Wood is correct, so yes, an additional quarter of a million dollars, which I pledged that we were going to squeeze money and push it back down to our classroom. So an additional $250,000, a quarter of a million, is going to be sent back down to our schools, excluding the big five high schools. Sale will be included, so it's basically an additional $10 per student that will go to offset the growing list of classroom materials and supplies that parents are being asked to provide for their students. I'm also sending double the amount of what we have in previous years, $300,000, to our high schools to reduce the student costs for extracurricular and co-curricular activities. So we're doubling the amount that we're sending to the high schools, so it costs less for kids to participate in after-school programs, because we just saw those, and I had a meeting with the principals the other day, and we're going to have another meeting with principals and athletic directors to look at creative ways that we can continue to try to reduce those costs, because unfortunately, a lot of our families are being, they just can't afford it, and that's unacceptable. So I am...
They go toward uniforms and things like that?
How could I, man, thank you for pointing that out.
Don't miss that.
That's a big piece, yeah. So the goal is, over the next four years, to send $1 million back to help shrink that list, and our principals know, you don't ask for copy paper, or dry erase markers, or those things that should be included in a free and public education. That's on us. That's on our dime. Now pencils and other things for individual student use, I get that, but that money will go to good use, as will the other $300,000 to reduce the cost of being a cheerleader at Lincoln High School, or whatever the activity may be, or in the band at Leon. So...
Ms. Rasmussen.
Does this include any particular cuts that we are used to seeing in a traditional typical budget, and/or does it anticipate continuing funds for... Dr. Cox, help me think of the program where we put mental health counselors in high...
Disc Village Program.
Disc Village Program, or the wraparound services we've talked about, any of that?
No, and that was, that was a partnership we have with Disc Village, that they're going to put mental health counselors in all of our secondary schools, and we're looking at creative ways to expand that down into elementary schools. As far as, what was your other question?
Sorry, the first part of my question was...
Oh, about cuts.
Do you have any cuts that we're...
I don't know that, you know, other than administrative cuts, we haven't cut any major programs, but there was a number of retirements, and then we've done some creative... You know, we have many different revenue sources, aside from our general revenue, so we were able to code people to different funding sources and kind of get creative, which allowed us kind of, you know, to recapture some of that money that's going back into our reserve, and allowed us to send dollars back to our schools. So, and I'll continue through attrition to look for additional ways to combine programs and district cost centers, but this is, to me, was a good first whack at it, a good first step.
And the wraparound services or the community school idea, is that not yet realized in this budget?
So we met, Michelle went to a meeting last week, and we are, no, full board, and we've kind of shifted over towards Sable Palm, and are partnering with FSU's College of Medicine. So we met with folks from...
Children's Home Society.
Children's Home Society last week, and our full team ahead in all direction right now as a pilot is Sable Palm, so we're having our next meeting at Sable Palm, I believe, if not next week, the following week.
And then are we eventually going to have a separate meeting, not tonight, about kind of where we are with after-school grades and what needs to be done for those schools that are struggling and...
Yeah, so with the school grades, you saw that we were down to two. We had Riley and Oak Ridge that received these. Five of the six that we were all concerned about came off of that list, so we have now tiered support. I met with Shane Seifert. Jillian will be back soon. She has her little baby boy, so she's very excited about that. So she's on her way back to the country, and we are gearing up, ramping up plans. We're going to have, Dr. Hightower is going to start a K-2 initiative at those targeted schools to try to get on the front end of the achievement gap. We have DJ Wright, we're contracting with Joe Mariel, that's going to really target some of the things that are going on in that school, so there'll be a lot of help and support. But all in all, I was, you know, pleased with how things turned out, really. You saw, we made an administrative change at Oak Ridge, and I'll introduce that principal, along with the new principal at Bond, on Tuesday, but I'll let Jillian and her team kind of give you a report and dig more into data about where we are with school grades and school accountability.
Ask another question?
Yes, go ahead.
We had spoken earlier about our need for more ESE aids in the classroom, and I just wonder where we are on that in terms of the budget.
So we've had those discussions, Dr. Cox and I, we met with Martha Fletcher to look at our IDEA budget and find out, see the individual needs. We have a healthy IDEA budget that we can use to support those ESE classrooms, so yeah, I feel...
But we get to see that budget? Is that something that comes before the board?
No, you're not allowed to see that.
I want to see it.
Yes, no, but why don't we table another discussion that can be centered more around IDEA and what we're doing in the lines of special student education and support at the district level for special student education and giving our different needs.
Okay. Ms. Striplin?
I think just since we're all throwing out kind of our items of interest for the future, I'd like to, and it's wonderful what we've done for bookkeepers, but I'm wondering if we have a plan to keep progressing them in pay. I think they just shoulder so much responsibility in our schools, and it's such a, it should be considered a professional position, much like administrative, and I'm wondering if we have that included, to have that discussion at some point in time.
Yeah, we moved them up...
Where they need to be.
Yeah, we moved them up a pay grade this year, and then gave an additional bump to the high school bookkeepers, so we moved them up a whole pay grade. But yeah, I agree with you. We have had conversations, because even, I guess, past practice was, you'd have a salary amount, and then you'd have kind of added as a supplement that were thrown in on top of that to retain employees, and not just bookkeepers, but people in IT and other areas, so how can we get away from that practice and start looking at our jobs or job descriptions, and then the compensation that comes with it, instead of trying to bump on the backside?
And I had a very interesting conversation with the principal about, you know, it's not like it was 20 years ago, there's so much added responsibility on them for accounting and for, and yet we don't require a degree in that position, is that correct?
I don't think it's a great position.
No, it's, yeah, and it's going to be given that salary, it's, yeah, like you said, it's probably, and that's something we can certainly address, but in order to recruit those types of people, it would take a significant increase in that position and how it's salaried.
I think we would all agree, if there's a financial issue to a school, it is, becomes very large, that role is so important. I would like to see them give some attention to that in the future.
And, you know, and I heard Ms. Bowen, and we talked about our custodians and maintenance staff and some other people, and it's coming, it is, we just couldn't take care of everybody at one time, and remember now, we only received, what, 2.4 from the state of that, 1.7, 1.8 is going to go to offset the 8% increase in healthcare, the other piece is going to be committed, the majority of that to increase in FRS, in the Florida retirement system, so that was basically a wash. These were just pots that we were able, again, save from what was allocated last year, and then cut on the amount of spending we were going to do in the coming year that gave us this little relief anyway. And then maybe next year, hopefully, you know, things will get better, and I've, like I said, I wish they would have given us that 3.7 million instead of in bonus money, where we could have the flexibility to meet the needs of our community, instead of one-size-fits-all for everyone in the state. It just, it doesn't make any sense, but I don't know what else to do about it.
Ms. Lewis Butler?
Yeah, Superintendent Hannah, I want to thank you for prorating the money the way you did for the budget this year. I wanted to ask you about the panel that you're putting together for the struggling schools. The panel that you're putting together, would they come to us in a workshop format to explain to us how they plan to implement the plans in these struggling schools?
Sure, they, sure, they can. They're in the process now of kind of analyzing the results from their scores last year, and then the district people will meet with them, and they'll have, come up with a school improvement plan moving forward to address their deficiencies and areas they can look for improvement, and we're going to offer as much district support to those targeted schools as we possibly can. Again, understanding that, and I've said again and again about comparing one school in one part of our county to other, another school in other parts, like comparing apples to oranges, they just aren't the same, so...
Ms. Wood?
It's fun to get to just talk.
Sure.
Told you, George.
Well, I mentioned this a time before, and I know it's a ridiculous turnaround time, you know, the Schools of Hope legislation, which the superintendents are fighting, which I'm grateful for that, and some school boards are too. There is a timeline of August 15th to apply for a district-run wraparound services, which is $2,000 per student. My understanding is, I don't even know if DOE has given us the guidelines yet, and the deadline is August 15th, which I know that sounds just practically impossible, and I see you shaking your head, but I just wonder if we could get a target crack team to come in that are grant writers and try to put something together to try to get that money, because it's somebody, some districts, 25 districts are going to get it, and we do have two schools.
Honestly, I'm not there yet. I mean, those are certainly conversations I can have over the course of the next two weeks with Jillian once she returns, and Shane, and to talk to Ashley Scott and some of our other folks to see, because with any time, you know, it's like with No Child Left Behind, yeah, that money looks very attractive, but a lot of times it comes with a lot of strings attached, and a lot of mandates, and a lot of reporting, and, 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 but no, I have not completely ruled it out, but I just haven't had the opportunity.
I know.
And we haven't had a lot of direction or guidance yet...
I know.
From the Department of Education or the State Board as to exactly what it's going to look like.
Well, I hope that we can at least explore it.
Sure.
I mean, you may come back to us and say...
Yeah, no, and I mean, I just, I'm not a no person, so yeah, if it makes sense, it's something that we agree that, yeah, let's try to get it, let's go for it.
I have a follow-up question, and I think I heard something about savings, I may not have, but I thought I heard some small savings. So my comments and questions are related to district support when it comes to our auditor's office, and the need, in my opinion, for additional personnel in that office, so that what we're doing is continuing to be, what's the word? It's so important, I think, that we have somebody, enough folk that can carry out. We've got one person, I think, in that audit, in that office, and rely on that position heavily, and with everything that is happening in a system as large as ours, it just appears from the 30,000-foot level that more help is needed there. Have you considered that, or...
So it seems like, it seems like I've heard that before. I'm not sure exactly who said it, but yes, absolutely, we are, and Ms. Paul is out, and she's, you know, she's been our thoughts of prayer. She's going to be okay, but she's out, but ironically, we have just advertised a new position in that department, and she has six applicants that she's very excited about, so she's going to reach out to them, and we're going to hire somebody, probably the first part of August. So yes, I heard you loud and clear, because there are two separate, there's the operating side of what's going on, the big picture side, and then there's the internal account side, so we definitely need someone that can look at the operations piece of the school district, and then someone can separately look at the internal audits and the internal accounts of all of our sites, which is a big job in and of itself.
Yes, it is, and we do need to give a quick shout-out to say to her that we hope that she continues to convalesce. She has been hospitalized for quite a while, so she's part of our family, and our prayers have gone out to her, so we thank her, and we thank you for your continued consideration and your continued enthusiasm about what you're about to now ask your team down there to present to us. Was that a good segue?
That was a great thing.
Great.
Perfect.
Your own, Merrill.
Hey, all right, if you will turn to, it's page lettered I, small i, right at the bottom, just to make sure we're all clear, we need a quorum at least at both of these meetings to be able to pass the budget. The next one...
Merrill, can you put the mic a little bit closer?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
The next meeting is the tentative budget hearing, and it's July the 25th at this same location, and that's the first time the public is able to stand up and speak for the budget, or to the budget. And the final budget hearing is September the 5th at 6:00 PM. In between these two periods, if you guys decide you want to add or something within the budget, we can work with you, but as of, pretty close to, probably a week before September the 5th, it's got to be all, and usually, in the past, you guys have never made that much of a change that was a big deal to fix, so... The next page, letter II, we will come back to, so that you can approve the advertisement of the budget, and we will discuss the rollback rate in just a second, but since we're on this page, the millage rate for required local effort of 4.325, that is mandated by the state, you don't have a choice over that. It did go down 0.277 mils, because they decreased it so much, you won't be giving a tax increase this year. And you only advertise when it's, the way the TRIM law works, is you only advertise to the public when you give a tax increase. If taxes decrease, you don't advertise that, you don't tout that, so... Anyway, the next two millage rates are the same as they've been, the 0.748 operating millage is, is that your discretion, that's as high as you can levy? You could levy lower, and I don't recommend that, but this is, you have discretion over this millage rate, and the same for the 1.5-mil capital outlay, that is a discretionary rate, and it's as high as it can go, for a total of 6.573 mils. Now if you will turn to new page three, the real number page three, we can quickly discuss the rollback rate. The rollback rate is the rate that if you levied it this year, it would raise the same revenue as last year, and this year, the rollback rate for the total millage is 0.64% less than it was last year. The rollback rate for the required local effort is 2.7% less than it was last year. When the, when, excuse me, it's 2.7%, the rollback rate is 2.7% more than the rate you're levying. When the rollback rate is more than the rate you levy, that you don't have a tax increase. Now if the rollback rate was less than what you're levying, you would have a tax increase, and this is a calculation we have to do on a form that's supplied to us by the Department of Revenue. So bottom line is, there are no tax, there is no tax increase this year. If there are no questions...
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
We spoke about this a minute before the meeting, but according to your example here, not only is there no tax increase, there's a tax decrease. Can you explain that?
Well...
Based on, at least, the example for the home state exemption in the House, that would be taxed, according to this, they would actually be taxed less.
We'll go ahead and take care of that. Let's go to the, there's a page in here where we show that calculation, and it's on page 22.
Thank you.
And what Ms., what Board Member Woods is referring to is that we use the example, if you have a $200,000 home, and the property value, the assessed taxable value of that home did not increase, and it has a $25,000 home state exemption, this year, that person, that homeowner would pay $48.47 less than they paid last year, and that all hinges on that property value not changing. If the property value goes up, they won't have that much savings. If someone, and property values for homeowners can't go up more than 3% a year anyway, so... So everybody's, they're going to not pay more school board taxes, for sure, on, on their property value.
But there's no choice on our part about this? This is what the state has decided and?
Right. This is, this is mandated. You, you don't have discretion over this particular millage.
Do the homework for us.
Okay.
Well, and that was an issue too, that's been an issue with superintendents around the state, is the roll, is the rollback rate, because it's, we're losing money. We're not getting as much money as we would have, or could have. Is that correct, Merrill?
Yeah, they made sure that the required local effort would not exceed the rollback rate when, when all of us do our calculations for tax increases.
So basically, if people's homes had appraised at a higher rate, the school board is not going to get the benefit of that, because the taxes are not going to, that they set the rollback rate at such a.
On the required local effort side.
The required local effort, that we can't get the money that in the, in past years, we would have gotten. Is that correct? I mean, not, not last year, but wasn't it like two years ago they started this?
Yeah, yeah. For the past couple of years, they've made sure that, but, well, that was probably more because of the, um, economy before that. We haven't had to advertise a tax increase in, in a pretty good while. Yeah. But it's been a conscious effort, for sure, the past two years by the legislature to make sure.
Thank you.
That happens. All right, back to, we were on page three. We skipped page one. Page one is a synopsis of the entire budget. Of five hundred and twenty-six million. The general fund is three oh five point eight. Special revenue is sixty million. Capital outlay is a hundred and three million. Debt service of fifty-seven point six million. Trust and agency is forty thousand dollars. And the difference there between the final budget, and that's tentative, because the unofficial final budget, we're still closing out our books, but it won't change much, is five hundred and twelve thousand. The next page we just discussed, which was the rollback rate. Uh, page three. Well, page three is the rollback rate. The next page was, that's the, that's the actual, that's the actual millage rates compared to last year.
Merrill, could I interrupt you just a second? I noticed there are people in the audience and they don't have anything to look at. We're looking at, are there handouts that people can?
Well, we, we had some out there.
Okay, all right, just, because it's not up on the board.
We may not have had enough.
Can it be up on the board, or?
The next one will be.
Okay, thank you.
This one, there wasn't time to get it to the.
Okay.
Okay, uh, we talked before about the decrease in required local effort of point two seven seven mils. You, on this page, you can see that. All the other millage rates stayed the same. And it also, the property value now is, is sixteen point nine five billion dollars. That gets us back to almost exact, and it's really close to what it was back around two thousand eight, when the recession hit and property values just plummeted. So it's taken that long to get back to where it used to be. That's seven hundred and fifty-one million increase, which is four point six four percent. The rollback rate we discussed, the local tax dollars. On the next page, required local effort would generate seventy point three eight eight million. That's a one point four million decrease. That's where, that's where the, that's where it all happens to make sure that people don't pay more taxes.
What are you on now, I'm sorry?
We're on page four.
Oh, I thought you said the next page.
I'm sorry, page four. So when we, when we compare the total revenue that we're going to, that we'll budget for next year and the total revenue we've received at this point, this year, it's about five hundred and twenty-seven thousand more. Capital outlay will get a one point four million dollar increase compared to last year. Following page five is just the legal advertising requirements. Page six is the notice of the final budget hearing on September the fifth. Let's spend a little time on page seven. It's a little different, it's been in the past. And this was one of the reasons it took longer to get it to you. I mean, you, we still would have gotten it to you today, but it would probably have been a little earlier. This ad includes requirements for the charter schools. If you go almost three-quarters of the way down the page, where it says, uh, and excuses for the small language, but we had to add a lot of stuff.
Mm-hmm, okay.
It says, there's like four asterisks, and it says charter school capital outlay projects pursuant to statute one oh one three point six two four. Everything below that is brand-new, so that we can, um, properly put this in the ad so the charter schools can get their money. One more thing about charter schools, just, and then I asked Naomi to take over the rest. Um, the charter school amount that we're calculating from LCIF is about three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. It went, at first, we thought it was going to be about eight hundred, but upon reading the statute and talking with some other, we found that we're supposed to back out the PICO portion they get. So that's why it decreased from our first estimate.
Where's, where's that amount noted?
That amount you can see on page, let me find the capital outlay page, on page nineteen.
Page nineteen.
Underneath the column where it says LCIF, one point five mils. On, right at almost the very bottom of the page, you'll see three sixty-four nine nine one. That's the LCIF amount that's budgeted for charter schools.
LCI, okay.
Okay, Merrill.
Ma'am.
On page seven, just before we move, I want to make sure that, Ms. Les Butler, you, you're clear?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just. Okay.
Okay. On page seven, under the asterisks.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Construction of school facilities, purchase of lease for permanent or relocatable school facilities. I know you say that this is the advertisement for the, um, charter schools, right? Is this saying that the money's to make all of that happen is in a part, a part of this budget that we're looking at?
It's saying that they sent us what they expect to spend it on, and this is one of the pieces they would be spending their money on.
Got it, okay. I'm ready. Thank you.
And two things, while we're on that, we appreciate them getting back to us quickly. We, we gave them one day, but that was how fast it had to be. We just got this last Friday. So, I mean, this, this, this is really take, I also want to recognize, uh, Joe Von Runkel, who is my secretary, she put a heck of a lot of work into getting this document done, especially this. She's somebody that didn't sleep last night, because she was concerned she couldn't get it done. So, um, this, this, it doesn't look like much, but we had to get it done with a real short period of time.
Well, actually, it does look like much, because we can all read it and see the numbers this time, speaking for those of us, everybody who's had some problems, so thank you.
You can see the numbers.
Yes, thank you, all.
Good job.
We got to do something about that. You can't let see the numbers.
Yeah, when I call it out, and when I call it out, you can point to it, and it's there. It's important.
No.
Real, real quick, if I may, Madam Chair, and this is one of the issues and reasons why there are several other school districts that are, launched a lawsuit against this legislation, is because these dollars, even though it's only less than four hundred thousand for Leon County, it's millions and millions of dollars for other counties. You know, we, because our public school system is so very healthy, only have four charter schools. We have other counties that have fifty-four, or sixty-four, a hundred and four charter schools. So for them, it's a, it's a huge deal.
Yeah.
Although, even though it's, it's three hundred and something thousand dollars, it's still, uh, still don't understand how we can commit public taxpayer dollars to renovate and remodel private property. Um, just, I'm sure that's what the suit's going to speak to, but, um, I'm just shocked that we have a bill that passed that's going to allow public tax dollars to remodel private property for, for those, for those, uh, for those projects.
Our capital outlay committee this year, we had ninety-four million dollars of, of needs. And we met about twenty million, I believe. So there's still a good seventy-four to eighty million dollars of unmet needs. And, you know, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars could have gone, that, that, that's a big fix for some problems at some schools that couldn't be done this year. So, in my opinion, if we're going to do this, we need to increase our millage rate to, so that we can take care of property that we already have. Instead of taking what we have and then cutting it again, I mean, we used to be at two mils. You guys, some of you were on the board, we used to be at two mils. They decreased it to one point seven five, said it had to go into the operating budget. Promised it would come back one day. Nah, then they decreased it to one point five. So that's just my editorial.
Y'all agree. Thank you, Merrill.
Naomi, are you on now?
I am on, and I'm going with the superintendent, and I'm excited this year, too.
Oh, wow, good.
We can't hear you either.
You can't hear me?
There we go.
That I've never been told.
But I'm excited, too, and I think half of the excitement is not having to spend nights trying to find money to balance a budget. So if you go to page eight, this is the, um, overall budget summary that will appear in the ad on Saturday. This kind of takes all the funds and gives you a total for the current year we're budgeting for. I won't go into a lot of detail, because it's, you're just getting it, so you can take it and review it over the weekend and see if you have any questions on it. We really don't have any major new fund sources or things that we budgeted for in any of the budgets as far as the general fund or special revenue is still the title one and IDA are the two biggest items in that particular one. With the general fund, there was an increase in the state portion with the decrease in the property tax portion. And like we said, it was about a two point seven million dollar, two point four, two point seven.
Two point four.
Increase from the state, but we did have a six and a half, almost seven percent increase in our health insurance, so that took one point seven of that. And retirement rate went up a half a percent, which for us equates to about five hundred thousand. So it was a wash, which, if you never say a wash is a good thing, it was money we didn't have to take out of the budget, so it kind of covered a cost that we would have had to take if we did, if we'd gone with the original budget that we got from the state. So, look, see, I can be sunshine and lollipops.
Your glass is half-full. I love it.
If you, um, if you'll go to the next page, this is just the revenue portion, excuse me, of the general fund. Uh, I did give you a, last year, what we originally estimated, and then your unofficial final. Like Merrill said, we are still working on closing out the numbers. These numbers are not going to change a significant amount. We've really, really worked really hard in finance to try to get these numbers as close as we could possibly get them for this meeting. It creates a better picture for the superintendent and the board, and it also cuts our workload down a little bit. But you can see, um, we started off last year estimating two hundred and ninety-seven million. We ended up with three hundred and two million. So there's, what happens there is we have like grants or state dollars that come in. This year, we're at three hundred and five million. One of the big items that we had last year that we don't have this year, that is a part of that, was the test development center, which was almost a two million dollar state grant flow-through, basically, is what it was. We no longer have that, so when you look up at the state portion, you'll see that that went, that miscellaneous state went down mostly because of that two million dollars that's not flowing through any longer. You can look down at the fund balance, what makes up the fund balance, and like I said, that will, that's not a final fund balance. That's definitely going to change some, because we're closing out POs after we pay the bills. We, I'm telling you more than you want to know. But after we pay the bills, we close out all the POs, and some of that money will come back to the general fund. Some of it will roll forward into the school sites or district cost centers. But you can see we're at three hundred and five million. And then the next few pages, I won't go through these individually. I think, other than Roseanne, everyone's, it's a format, it's the same for these, where I take the budget, all the revenues we receive, I turn around and allocate it. And this spreadsheet and the three pages behind it tells you exactly, dollar for dollar, where every penny has been budgeted in the general fund. So if you take a look, it breaks it down into what projects it's, it's given into. I mean, it's very open, so, but if there's a project you've got a question about, we didn't know, and I apologize, because we were really rushing to get this particular document put together. I mean, it's, it's a clean, good document, but we normally put behind this descriptions of what some of those projects are. We'll have that for you for the tentative budget on Tuesday, but it's really, there's not any new in there. The superintendent actually has, and staff have reduced some of the stuff that we had budgeted before. We looked at it, were we really spending the money? Did we, so if we didn't spend it, we took it away. So, but without, we didn't cut any programs by doing that. It was just monies that we weren't using anyway, so why budget it if we can bring it back?
I noticed we have nothing in workforce development, is that because we haven't heard yet on that?
No, we do. Where, where does it?
On page ten, it's the second item.
Yeah. We're getting six point two in that. Workforce is number two.
I guess on page nine, it says zero, maybe that just hadn't been corrected.
What page?
Page nine.
One we're looking at right now.
Where'd you see workforce?
Workforce development says zero.
No, that's adult handicap that says zero, and that will be two twenty-five. The workforce is a six point two million, six, almost six point three.
Six point two nine, yeah, almost six point two.
Oh, I see the difference is zero. I'm sorry, I was reading that wrong.
Workforce will be in there in the final budget. I just didn't get the budget in time to put it into this document.
And the other question I have was on instructional materials. It says we're down seventy-one thousand dollars. Is that because of the state allocation, or what's that?
It is, because that's based on students, um, and they have a formula that they do it. It's based on, there's growth that, they have formula, and that will change as the year goes by.
It will.
Yes, we'll get more money, or they may reduce. It's all based on FTE from here forward.
That was also one of my concerns. Every time they stand up, it was about teachers and teacher pay, and, you know, my wife's a teacher, I get it, Ms. Striplin, but, um, but there's also, we need chemistry books. We have many other needs in our, in our school system, and that, we're talking about, the, the BSA continues to go up, but the, that categorical for instructional materials and supplies hasn't budged. If anything, it's probably gone down. And we have significant needs for instructional materials and supplies, I can assure you that.
Yeah, I'm sorry to see that go down seventy-one thousand dollars.
Right, but, and like I said, it'll fluctuate throughout the whole year. But in this year, the difference this year from last year, last year, we'd set aside a million and a half. We had to set it aside to make our three percent in our fund balance. There's no restrictions on the textbook dollars this year. It's all there. It's not, we've had, that's why, I, I, I know I'm nerdy, but that's why I'm excited. I didn't have to do that kind of stuff this year to make our three percent fund balance.
If you will, you will, may not remember, but last year, we had to provide a resolution to you guys to approve that, that instructional materials, that's not in this document. So we didn't have to use it this year. And the other thing about the, the small decrease, the F, unweighted FTE and this projection has a, what, seventeen or eighteen less? So that is why there's seventy-one thousand less, and all, that'll, you know, whether that changes or not, I mean, for the first time ever, we got a declining, declining, well, I forget, declining enrollment amount in, in this particular FEFP. Now, if we, if it's, if it turns out that we get more than what we projected, that, that won't hold. But anyway, that's why you saw a decrease there.
Uh, the next three pages behind this are just the backup with those project numbers, are those projects that list what makes up that total. I show you what we budgeted the year before and what we're budgeting this year. Uh, the next few pages are just more information of the same numbers, just breaking them down in different ways, like showing you what we budgeted or expended by object, then I'll show by, how, what we budgeted and expended by function. Just a little more information for you to read tonight and this weekend when you're laying on the beach or whatever you're doing. Then the page fifteen, we just take it and give an analysis of the, it, fun, beginning and ending fund balances from the past two years and where we're projecting we're going to be now. We don't really, unless you really, really want to go into the following pages, it's like the special revenue, which is mostly, that's food service and IDEA and title one, those are the big projects that's in there. Capital outlay and debt service, capital outlay, the budget's brought to you separately earlier in the year. This is just where we put it down in numbers in the document itself. Uh, I don't think there's any, we did, went over the cost to the homeowners. There's a attachment of the staffing plan for the schools, it's attached at the back. It's several pages. Then we have our TRIM dates.
What page TRIM dates on?
TRIM dates are on page twenty-nine.
Yes, okay.
And that concludes our document.
On the, um, on page twelve. On the, on page 12, of the school improvement...
Yes, ma'am.
Is the original zero, the estimate, 338,000.
What happened with that was, that's lottery enhancement dollars that we get for the school improvement, and for the school recognition dollars are also lottery enhancement dollars. So when they do the school recognition dollars, you only get those additional dollars if there's money left, like they have a pot of, I'm going to say $10 million that they do for school recognition. So if they allocate to all the schools and there's, they only use nine million, they'll take the other million and allocate for school rec, for school improvement dollars. But in the past, last year and this year, that's a culmination of the two years because we got some at the end, they didn't give it to us till the end of the year because of school recognition, because they appealed the grades and they were so late this past year, we didn't get the money till the end of the year. So we allocate $5 per unweighted FTE in that. I'm doing $10 to give them the past year and the current year. So that's why it's the 338, but we haven't gotten it in the past because all the money's been used for school recognition, there was not any left to give for the SAC committees.
That's going to the schools.
Correct.
School improvement.
That's for your school advisory committees.
Advisory, okay. What is the teacher lead program?
That's the, it's a stipend that they give to teachers, like it averages about $250. We allocate it to the teachers for buying classroom supplies that they would normally pay out of their pocket. This year, we are going with a debit card to the teachers, we're not giving them the checks any longer. They'll be getting their debit cards next week. By July 31st, they'll have those debit cards.
Okay, and then get 200, okay, all right.
Just, just in case, because you never know what kind of phone calls you get. The ones that get debit cards are the ones that are, that are in our system as of July...
July 1st.
July 1st. So if a teacher's been hired after that, they will not get a debit card till September because you just, that's just...
They'll get the same amount of money?
Yes.
And it's basically $250 per teacher?
Be in a debit card.
It's 245 this year.
245.
Okay, all right. Well, at least they got it coming.
Yes, ma'am.
They actually get it earlier this year than they have in the past because norm, in all the other past years, they wouldn't get, they would get a check, but it would be towards the end of September. This year, the bulk of the teachers will get this debit card July 31st, and they can use it, so that they're getting their money quicker this year than they have in the past because of the debit card.
And they know what the spending limitations, restrictions are and how the receipts have to be, and they all understand all this.
The bookkeeper's going to explain that, I hope.
It's all the same.
Yeah, when they pick up the card, they've got, they have to sign a form that tells them exactly what they have to do.
What's excluded and what's...
I'm actually providing some instructions.
Very good, thank you.
Goes to them also.
On that same note, do we have a training program for our bookkeepers?
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I need to know.
Those cards have some restrictions.
Yeah.
Those cards, by the way, have restrictions that helps keep us straight and them straight. They can't just go out to ABC Liquor and buy Pinot Grigio with those cards.
What are you saying, Meryl?
Well, Meryl, okay, it's about that time of day.
You're sounding very Italian.
You know, just asking. Are there further questions? Meryl, let me just say to you and Naomi, as the board looking at what they may want to ask, I want to thank you all for the work that you've done, and thank you for your superintendent's tentative budget bullets, Mr. Superintendent, we each have a copy of that front and back. Our homework is that we will read this information that we've talked about. And today, we have had a wonderful discussion on the rollback rate. We've discussed the superintendent's tentative budget, and so now the superintendent is requesting approval from the board, from the board, to advertise all of the appropriate notices and to set a public hearing on the 2017, 2018 tentative budget for Tuesday, July 25th, 2017, at the Aquiline Howell Center, 3955 West Pensacola Street, Tallahassee, Florida. This meeting is being held for the purpose of consideration and approval by the board of the 2017, 2018 proposed tentative budget and required millage rates. So now, we are at number four on that sheet of I, I. Are we all together?
Yes.
Colleagues? Okay. So at this point, could someone, I don't have to be the one, read item number four?
Yes, I will.
All right, Ms. Lewis Butler?
The following tentative millage rates are proposed for the fiscal year of July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018. A for local required effort, 4.325. B for discretionary operating purposes, .748. C for capital outlay projects, 1.500. Total proposed millage, 6.573.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis Butler. Ms. Rasmussen?
I moved that the board grant permission to advertise all the appropriate notices to include the following tentative millage rates for fiscal year July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018. For the required local effort, 4.325. For discretionary operating purposes, .748. For capital outlay projects, 1.500. The total proposed millage, 6.573.
Second.
You have heard the motion by Rasmussen. Wait a minute, wait a minute, let's go into this part.
And to set, sorry, I could amend my motion to include setting a public hearing on the 17, 18 tentative budget for Tuesday, July 25th, 2017 at 6:00 PM at the Aquiline Howell Center, 3955 West Pensacola Street, Tallahassee, Florida.
Now, it has been motioned by Rasmussen and second by Lewis Butler. Questions from the board? Hearing none? All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's the same. Thank you for what was going to be a 10-minute meeting that has only been one hour. Great discussion. The meeting is adjourned, almost. We have number three to be discussed on the blue sheet here, starting with the, where am I?
Item 3.02.
3.02, a public hearing and adoption. The superintendent recommends, following a public hearing, approval of amendments to policy 6340, modifications and alterations to school buildings effective July 21, 2017.
Move approval.
Are there speakers?
No speakers.
No speakers? It's their motion?
She moved.
Move approval.
Rasmussen moved, second by Striplin. Discussion from board? Hearing none? All say aye?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Point 0, point 3, point 03 is a public hearing adoption as well. The superintendent recommends, following a public hearing, approval of amendments to policy 5335, care of students with chronic health conditions effective July 21, 2017. No speakers?
No speakers.
No speakers?
Move approval.
Moved by Striplin?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Discussion by the board? Questions? Hearing none? All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Point 3, point 3.04 is a public hearing and adoption. The superintendent recommends, following a public hearing, approval of amendments to policy 5330, use of medication effective July 21, 2017. Speakers?
No speakers.
No speakers? It's their motion?
Move approval.
Moved by...
Wood?
Wood, second by Lewis Butler. Discussion from the board? Questions? None? All say aye?
Aye.
It approves, it'll approve unanimously. Okay, I think that covers the agenda items. Is there anything else, further business to come before this board? Would that, Mr. Superintendent?
Madam Chair, quickly, just to remind you, after the agenda review on Monday, we're having an open house on the Lively's campus at the New Home of Adult and Community Education and the Adults with Disabilities Program. So they're very excited to have their grand opening Monday evening at 6:00 PM immediately following our agenda review.
Yes, thank you, sir. And may I just call to your attentions the trim dates so that we can have a full quorum? I know everybody's into summer vacations, but if you're not here, we need to let Ms. Henson know so that the others of us can certainly be here so that there's a quorum. Unless there are objections, Ms. Striplin, we will adjourn, is that all right?
Adjourn.
And so we are.[1782.53]